I am the committee and refrain from booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. So we'll now move to the agendas. First of all, minutes to the last meeting, is it? Minutes to the last meeting. Are they happy that they can be signed, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillors Michaela Gray and John Ward.
Disposal of interests? Questions by members of the public? And questions from members? Beth, are there any relevant updates to come into legislation?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Okay, right.
I'm John Rovini, I'm councillor for Shottenall in Hayesamore and I'm vice chairman.
I'm Zach Elwood, I'm the head of planning and economic development.
Emma Diersley, committee services.
Good evening, members, I'm Lewis Jones, planning solicitor.
Good evening, members, Beth Howland-Smith, development manager.
Evening, members, Ruth Dovey, principal planning officer.
Good evening, members, Chris French, area team leader.
Good evening, members, I'm Dan Holmes, planning officer.
Much, should there be any sudden, any sudden inspections arising from this, this will be held as of February 21st of February. It's not to be agreed, but anyway. Anyway, can we move on to the first act, which is an application review subject to public speaking, that's A1. WA2019191719 Lancaster Avenue, an application under section 73 to very condition one of WA20172273. Approved plans to provide building and carport in the front garden. And Ruth Dovey to present, please.
Good evening, members, and thank you, Chair. Just to draw attention to the fact that there is a written update sheet for this one. So, the application site comprised a recently constructed one and a half storey residential building. And the site is located within a residential area that is largely characterised by detached dwellings. I put up an aerial photograph on this slide that provides you with an indication of the boundary line of the St Austins Conservation Area. So, anything below the green line that you see on the aerial is within the conservation area. And you can see the application site lies just within it. So, the application is an amendment to original planning application, which was for a single dwelling that has already been constructed on the site. However, this application seeks changes to that permission. The original permission saw approval for a garage immediately in front of the proposed dwelling house, which you can see on the approved plans. Under the current proposal, they wish to not construct that garage. And instead of which, they would like a cycle store and workshop and carport in a different part of the site. So, you can see it on the proposed plans, it would be the structure that runs along the front garden boundary. These are effectively comparative elevations. So, on the right hand side, you have the approved elevations, and I've labelled up where the approved garage was relative to the new dwelling. On the left hand side, I've proposed elevations of the carport, workshop and cycle store structure. So, it would be largely timber construction and the carport would have some timber slats on the back of it. Apologies, I think in my report, I put that they'd be on the front, immediately fronting Lancaster Avenue, but they'd actually be on the rear elevation of timber slats. So, here are some site photos. So, the carport would effectively be running along the hedge that you can see in photograph A, the top photo. Photograph B gives you an indication of the design and style of the dwelling that has been approved and constructed. You can see that's relatively modern in design with some timber cladding featuring. Photograph C is taken from the front door of the dwelling, looking out towards the area where the proposed building would go. And you can see there are two shrubs in that garden, and they would be removed as a result of the proposal. Photograph D shows a tree that is located just adjacent to the vehicular access to the site. Sorry, I've gone too fast. Photograph G is a picture, an image of a tree that is located within a neighbouring garden at 20 Great Austins. The top photograph, photograph E, just gives you a general picture of how Lancaster Avenue looks and the fact that most of the other properties in the street are of quite traditional design. And photograph F is a photograph of the house opposite 19 Lancaster Avenue. And you can just see within that photograph, there is a garage in the front garden. Just to clarify, the master of consideration, obviously, the dwelling that has been approved under the original application has been constructed. So, the only thing that we are considering here is the newly proposed building in the front garden area instead of the garage that was previously approved. And this gives you an indication of how the structure would sit within the street scene. So, you can see here where the hedge line is relative to the height of the structure. And the fact that because there's a gradual slope on the land, part of the structure would actually cut into the ground to reduce its prominence. So, the key considerations in consideration of this application are really the visual amenity and the impact on the character of the conservation area. And officers have gone into quite some detail in the report about why we consider that the development is acceptable within the conservation area. And particular mention is made in relation to the hedge that is being retained to the low height of the structure. And the fact that because the dwelling is set further back into the site than other dwellings within the street, that there is sufficient space within the front garden area for this structure without it appearing cramped and crowded. So, just turning out to the listed matters for consideration, I've had, I've got here. I've covered visual impact and impact on character in the conservation area. The tree officer has considered the application in relation to the trees that you saw in the photos and raises no objection. There's no harmful impact on neighbouring residential amenity and County Highway Authority raised no objection. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have one public speaker on this, Mr Andrew Tompkins, could you please come forward? You have four minutes, Tompkins, from when you start.
Thank you. The new house at Lancaster, 19 Lancaster Avenue, is a unique site for Great Austins, being as it is, a replacement modern house. And the original house was built in the 1960s, and there always has been a garage located in the front garden of the site. And as a result, the site has always been a little bit out of character within the area, and the site has always been the exception to the rule. The site is quite hidden, and the house is mainly single storey. The site is enclosed by brick walls or dense hedging, and the only way to see the house is via the access drive, which creates a sort of a gap in the hedge. And directly opposite the access drive was the original garage. So, this 1960s garage was all that you could see from the street. There were large, uninviting garage doors with the house number, and that was it. Permission was granted for a replacement garage on the same place, and the applicant was ready to build the approved garage. But when the original 1960s garage was demolished, we all felt that it was a bit of a shame, and that the access entrance was so much more pleasing, open and less cramped without the garage there. It was a relief that those large garage doors had gone. And the applicant saw an opportunity to improve the site and asked us to go back to the drawing board. The main objective of this application is to hide the garage, so when you enter the site, you can view the house, which we suggest will feel more welcoming and inviting. And the new proposal is for a more open carport and a small workshop. And the new garage will be hidden behind the hedge, and although it will be closer to the street, it will be less prominent on the street scene because it will be screened by the retained hedge. And because the site is rather unique, this application cannot and will not set a precedent for other houses in the area because they do not share the same unique planning history. Indeed, the house opposite already has a large garage at the front, which is located within two metres of the front hedge and extends to a considerable height due to the pitched roof profile. If this application is refused, the application would have, the applicant would revert back to building the existing permission, which is bulky, also at the front, larger and obscures the view to the front door, which is a bit of a shame. The applicants are a retired couple and the workshop is greatly desired. We would be grateful if the committee would consider supporting the application, because we suggest the proposal at the committee meeting today is a better design for the applicant and for the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Tompkins. Right. Any who wish to speak on this item? Nobody wishes to speak? Councillor Edmonds?
Sorry, I've got a couple of questions. The first is the residential extension guide, was that not an appropriate material consideration for this development?
Yes, we have considered our SPD and we've considered all other relevant policy and guidance. And in this particular instance, we feel that the, that there are reasons for allowing this structure within the front garden area.
Can I ask you a second question?
Sorry?
You have a second question, councillor Edmonds?
Yes, please. There's a substantive response from Surrey Highways, unusually. That would have been helpful if it had been published or added to the submission to the councillors. Thank you.
Do you want to answer that, Ruth?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The response from Surrey County Highway Authority should be on the website under this particular application.
Yes, that's where I got it from.
Yes, the point me, 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 my, my, we should have added it as councillors, but we couldn't.
Sorry, what I'm trying to emphasise is that if it was in the brief, it would have been far easier to interrogate the information.
Okay. Councillor Neil?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of points here. I've had a representation from one of my ward councillor colleagues, who pointed out that there wasn't much warning on the website about this one coming forward for tonight. And he thinks that if there had have been a bit more warning, it might have been appropriate to arrange a site visit for councillors. So, I just want to make that point. Moving on from that, we did consider this in the town consultation meeting, and the town recommended it to go ahead. So, I'm also mindful of that point. I know the site myself because it's in my ward. I've not been inside the site, but I'm well familiar with what it's like on the outside and the hedge and what have you. I tend to go along with the view that we came to in the town on this personally. But, you know, I do want to just make that point of what other people have said to me. And just ask members if they think they should do a site visit in that consideration. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Hess?
Yes, having heard what the architect had to say about the way it's replacing what was originally there some time back previously. And given that the view of the house would now be much better than if the currently proposed garage with permission was actually built. I think the carport and workshop and cycle store will be very discreet and hidden behind the hedge. And with Farnham Town Council Planning and Licensing Working Group support, I would support the officer's recommendation to grant permission for this. Thank you.
Councillor Corbyn?
I'm very conflicted on this. I mean, if we weren't starting from here, I would not support it at all. You know, there was no history, I saw the site, saw the building. I know the site like the back of my hand, Lancaster Avenue used to be in the Bourne until the electoral commission got its hands on it. I was there this afternoon, I was that woman, oh no, it was this morning, I went. I don't like it, I have to be honest. But I feel with all the work we've done on character within the town, that this site, I accept that it is slightly different from other sites. I don't put it in Great Austins, I put it in the area adjacent to Great Austins. I don't really see it quite following FMP5. But it should follow the other sort of aspirations in the design statement for Lancaster Avenue. And I don't think it follows any of them at all, to be honest. Having said that, we now have a new build. We have the possibility of a garage which has been given permission to be ahead in front, beyond, you know, head of the building line, as it were. And now we're looking at putting something else right on the edge alongside an existing hedge. I felt that the bushes, which have been dismissed as just large bushes that are going to go, are actually the only sort of bit of life at the moment. Maybe there's going to be some more landscaping in the whole area. I mean, it's a bit depressing when you look through the gate, to be honest, at the moment. So, I am conflicted in this. My heart says, you know, this is all wrong, we shouldn't be putting structures of this size with this function in the front, and especially as close to the frontage of Lancaster Avenue. That's what my heart says. My head, knowing the history of this site, and this is coming in for, is this not the second, section 73? And I know what it's like when you start building out, you do see improvements that you can make. I think this is hard. I think it's unbalanced, but I honestly, as I say, if I weren't starting from here, I couldn't support this at all, in terms of character.
Very much. Any other councillor which should speak?
Thank you. I see on the back of these amendments that they're going to do some landscaping, is that right?
Thank you, Chair, yes. Well, there is a, there was a landscaping condition that was attached to the original consent, and that landscaping condition has been carried forward on to this planning application. So, they will have to submit details for us about landscaping that we will have to agree, and we can be mindful of your comments.
I'm actually quite happy with this, it doesn't, I think it's fine.
Corbyn, councillor Edmonds?
I just wish to come back on that, because I don't see this as a spacious plot. And I don't see this house sitting as far back in the plot as you obviously see it. And I think there's very limited space, which is, I presume, why they want the garage and the workshop moved. Because when you've got the house, and there were two cars parked towards the drive there, I mean, you didn't have a great deal of space. So, when you've got this structure up, plus the new structure, plus any car that's not sitting in the carport, you're not going to have a huge space for landscaping. It looks much bigger on the picture, I can assure you that it does when you go and see it in the flesh. So, you know, whatever landscaping condition, I hope it does really soften it. I mean, I know it's a wooden building, so in theory, it's softer than some other materials. But actually, the way it sits in the plot, it's very proud, although it's low, you know, it makes a statement in the plot, as presumably it's meant to do. And therefore, this ancillary building will also make a statement. You know, it's not trying to fit in with any of the architecture around it. It's going, we, I think, you know, we're not, well, I didn't see a great deal of greenery, and I didn't see a great deal of space for greenery. So, I hope we can get some greenery on that side, and then I think it will be acceptable in the, in the street scene.
Councillor Edmonds?
Yes, just one, sorry, just one question. How are the conditions going to be enforced, especially Surrey Highways' condition about onsite parking during construction? Thank you.
Officers?
Thank you, Chairman. They will be enforced in the normal way. As you'll be aware, our enforcement team doesn't actively police construction sites. However, we are ready to investigate any concerns that are raised with us by members of the public, or council members, or the town council. And regularly do so as they are, as they come in. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Clarke?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I do think, and I know this area quite well, that this carport is not imposing. Okay, it's right up at the front of the plot. It's single storey, it's flat roof, it's opened up at the front. And I think the designers have done a pretty good job, and I would support it.
Speak? Councillor Neil?
Yeah, just to add to what I said before, I go along with what councillor Clarke has just said. It seems that the architects have done a reasonable job here, and I think not having the garage in front of the house, you know, is quite a plus point in the way it was described by the architect. So, I think the balance is in favour of the new building being where they're proposing to put it now.
Is there anybody else which should speak? I think we should move to the recommendation. Okay, well, the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to nine, with amended condition four, as per the update, and informative one, permission may be granted. Now, I believe we're doing my hands away. I'm afraid, going back to the old system of hands, I'm afraid, those in favour? Those in favour, yes.
Thank you, Chair. The application has been brought before the planning committee, as Waverley Borough Council is the applicant. And the council's scheme of delegation is clear that such items must be determined by the planning committee. The application site is located to the north west side of Wainfleet Lane in Farnham, within the developed area. The site comprises a two storey semi-detached dwelling set on a higher land level than the road. The nearest neighbours are eight, Wainfleet Lane to the west, attached, and four to the east. The block plan indicates the proposed rear and side extensions, shown in pink. You can make it out. The extension to the rear would adjoin the side extension to form a wraparound extension. Some site photographs. Photograph A shows the view looking north west from Wainfleet Lane. This is the principal elevation and shows the relationship with number four. Photograph B shows the rear elevation of the site, looking south east. This shows the relationship to attached property number eight. Photograph C shows the south west elevation of number four. This indicates that there are no windows on the side elevation of number four. Therefore, there are no concerns regarding loss of privacy to this property. This slide shows the elevations of the proposal. There would be a 50 centimetre gap from the side elevation of the rear extension to the boundary shared with number eight. Much of the bulk and mass would be contained within the boundary fencing. The total depth past the rear elevation would be 3.97 metres. The floor plan illustrates that the extension would provide adequate living for the tenant. Officers have given consideration to the proposal and consider that the proposed direction of a single storey rear extension and single storey side extension would be acceptable for the reasons set out in the officer report and mentioned above. Officers consider the main matters for consideration by members to be: design and impact on visual amenity. The rear extension is single storey and would have no harmful impact on the street scene. It would remain a subservient addition and would be considered acceptable. And impact on residential amenity. The proposal has been subject to a number of alterations. The agent has liaised with the planning officer and the occupational therapist to design a suitable scheme that would meet the needs of the tenant whilst complying with the council's residential extensions SPD. It would be considered that there would be no harmful impact on the neighbours, number four and number eight, Wainfleet Lane. The application site is within the built up area where the principle of development is acceptable. The proposal is considered acceptable with regards to impact on character and residential amenity. Therefore, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, there's no public speaking, therefore, does any councillor wish to comment? Councillor?
You mentioned occupational therapy, is the tenant, because I gather there's some additional downstairs cloakroom and amenity there. Is the, maybe, maybe I shouldn't be asking that question, actually. But is it a special needs person or an elderly person living there?
It's for a disabled tenant, yeah. So, it's designed around wheelchair access.
Yeah, I thought so, okay. I mean, I've got no objection at all to it.
Councillor Edmonds?
Sorry, there was mention of a 50 centimetre gap, I couldn't understand where the gap was. Was that between the two properties?
It's quite hard to make out in the drawing, but you can notice, in the drawing on the left, there was a gap just underneath, to the left hand side of the rear extension, there's a 50 centimetre gap. And that was, that was to bring the height of the rear extension down, so it doesn't join with the, with the boundary fence.
Sorry, just to confirm, that's the 50 centimetre gap between the construction and the boundary fence?
Yep.
Any member which should comment? Yes, councillor?
Thank you, just to clear a point up. At the top of page 24, it says, UPVC double glazed, existing UPVC double glazed match existing. Does this mean the roof? And does this mean all of the roof for both extensions?
For the windows?
Just the windows, not the roof?
It's just the roof. Oh, just the windows.
Just the windows, okay, thank you.
Any other councillor which should speak? Councillor Dixon?
Dixon, yeah, just to say, I think actually we should probably congratulate Waverley for upgrading the house in this way.
Any other councillor which should speak? Shall we move to the recommendation? Yes, just to ask.
I'd like Waverley to go a bit further, actually. If it's an elderly or disabled person, I'd like them to put an ambulance layby in there and improve the wretched road because it's barely drivable. I nearly took my sump out on that road, it's terrible. Opportunity to improve amenities? Anyway, ha ha.
I take your point, councillor Edison, it didn't need a, it's nothing to pause now. Shall we move to the recommendation? Right, okay. The recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to three and informative one, permission be granted. Those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against? And against? Abstain? One abstention, okay, right, well, in that case, the application is granted. Right, final item of the night, I'm sure you've got it, please say it. Is the item number, is the application number WA20191878, 187, the Chantilly, Farnham? is the application number WA20191878, 187 The Chantilly, Farnham, a proposal of direction of extension and alterations. Are you going to present this to Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, Ruth?
Thank you, Chair. Just once again to draw committee's attention to the fact there's written an update sheet on this one, and also that it has come to committee because the agent is a councillor. So the application site is an end-of-terrace residential property located in a residential state in Farnham, and there's an aerial photo there that just provides you a little bit more context. Photograph A shows the front elevation of the property with car parking spaces next door. Photograph B just provides you is a photograph that just zooms in a bit more on those car parking spaces and where the extension would be located. So basically, the fence, the gates would be removed, and the extension would go in the place of those gates. Photograph C is the rear elevation of the property, and you can just see the rear elevation of the neighbours as well. And photograph D is the rear garden area. So these are the existing and proposed elevations, so effectively it's a wraparound extension, but it only wraps around very modestly to the side of the existing dwelling. Officers consider that the design is okay. And if I take to the floor plans, these are existing proposed floor plans, if you look at the proposed floor plan, you can see that the extension is set some distance off the side boundary with the attached neighbour. So from an impact on residential amenity perspective, we're happy that it doesn't result in loss of daylight and isn't overbearing. The only other thing that I think I should mention is that where the front line of the extension is, where it wraps around the side of the property, it projects slightly in front of the existing curb, but the car parking space would still remain in accordance with our standards in terms of length, which is 4.8 metres. So in terms of visual impact, impact on neighbours and car parking and highways, officers consider the development acceptable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any officer wish, any member wish? councillor Hess?
Looks like a pretty stock standard extension to me, so I would support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
I would say the only reason this has come before is because one of the agents is a Waverley Borough councillor, as you appreciate, yes. Any other councillor wish to speak? No? Shall we move straight to the recommendation then? Okay, the recommendation is that subject to conditions one to two and informative one, permission be granted.
Eleven? One?